Okay, it is now 6:30 and I'm gonna call our meeting to order of our Fillmore City Council. All right, we'll stand for the pledge and we'll counsel Mayor Protem, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have our roll call.
Mayor Protem Mendez. Mayor Villa Senor.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Garnica.
Present.
And Councilmember Brogi will be absent today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next on the agenda is our approval. May I entertain a motion? Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
We approve the agenda.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Garnica, second from Mayor Protem. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our presentations. Our first presentation today is a proclamation in the month of March, and this is to honor and recognize Cesar Chavez, farmworker, labor leader, civil rights movement leader, and recognize that March 31st is gonna be proclaimed Cesar Chavez Day in Fillmore. In the state of California, we do have Cesar Chavez Day. It is a day of service for our state. And I wanted to do a proclamation again as mayor to recognize Cesar Chavez and recognize the impact that he's had on farmworker communities, but really all of California and particularly how the movement that he and others began for farm labors continues to this day and that we have several organizations present today to receive a proclamation as they are continuing the, in honor of Cesar Chavez, in the spirit of helping farmworkers here locally. So what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation and then I'll go down and sort of introduce each of the three groups that we have here today to receive it. Okay. Proclaiming March 31st, 2025, as Cesar E. Chavez Day. Whereas, Cesar Estrada Chavez was born on March 31st, 1927, and raised by farmworkers who lost their home and livelihood during the Great Depression. He toiled alongside men, women, and children who performed daily backbreaking labor for meager pay and deplorable conditions and who were denied the most basic protections, including minimum wages, healthcare, and access to drinking water. And whereas, having witnessed such conditions, Cesar Chavez resolved himself to bettering the plight of the farmworker, thus encouraging the organization of the National Farm Workers Association, the NFWA, in 1962, later known as the United Farm Workers of America, wholeheartedly championing the cause of the farmworker, organizing multiple hunger strikes, marches, and nonviolent resistance. And whereas, because of his extraordinary accomplishments, on August 8th, 1994, Cesar Chavez posthumously became the second Mexican-American to receive the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian honor in the United States, and was honored by the state of California by the Declaration of Cesar Chavez Day on the date of his birth. And whereas, Cesar Chavez has left a legacy as an educator, environmentalist, and a civil rights leader, reminding us that every job has dignity, every life has value, and everyone, no matter who they are, what they look like, or where they come from, should have a chance to flourish. And whereas, the city of Fillmore has historically benefited as a community from the rich diversity of agricultural laborers who would become an integral part of its social and economic fabric, continuing its farming tradition, many members of which are still actively involved with the agricultural community. And whereas, Santa Paula, our neighboring city in the Santa Clara Valley, is home to the first monument dedicated to farmworkers in the United States, unveiled 15 years ago in 2010. And whereas, today, several local organizations continue to honor the work of Cesar Chavez in raising awareness and supporting the needs of our local farmworkers, including One Step a La Vez, which has hosted an immigration information forum and a farmworker appreciation day. They had one last year and gonna continue to have one, I think, hopefully on a yearly basis or if not more, giving out supplies such as gloves, scissors, lunch bags, and fruit sacks that farmworkers, farmworkers' families need here in Fillmore. As well as house farmworkers, whose mission is to promote affordable, safe, and stable housing for Ventura County farmworkers and their families through education and advocacy, and Friends of the Field workers, whose supportive programs include providing emergency funding to farmworker families in Ventura County who are experiencing a variety of crisis situations, such as an illness, injury, or loss of housing. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Christina Villa Senor, Mayor of the city of Fillmore, and on behalf of the Fillmore City Council, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2025, as Cesar E. Chavez Day in the city of Fillmore, and encourage all residents to promote services to the community in honor of Cesar Chavez's life and work. So I just wanted to come down to present the proclamations to the three agencies who are here today. So first, I'll call up One Step a La Vez if they would like to say just a quick minute too of what you've done to help farmworkers. And we'll take a photo too, so let's do that first. And then why don't you guys all come up here? We'll take a quick photo. Are you good? To Susan? Come on, over here. There you go, you can hold it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you to our fellow city council members. We really appreciate it. And we have in May, again, our Farmworker Appreciation Day where we will be, hopefully, doing the same thing and even more building off giving to our farmworker community and those who support us. But we are also participating in the Cesar Chavez March, and we invite you guys, if you guys would like, to RSVP and join us. In Oxnard, we're gonna participate in the Oxnard March. They're providing the One Step a La Vez with a free mode of transportation, so they're gonna provide us a bus and we'll be able to get free food, and we just hope you guys could come and support and have fun. Thank you.
Okay, next, I will call up house farmworkers to receive the proclamation.
Well, congratulations, One Step a La Vez and Friends of Field Workers, and thank you to my board members and task force members for being here, but also on behalf of house farmworkers, thank you, Mayor Villa Senor. Thank you for all of your efforts to help the success of the missions of each organization you've named and presented today. We appreciate you.
Okay, and last, I'd like to call up Candy with Friends of the Field Workers.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today here, and congratulations to the other organizations. Just keep focusing on the mission. Friends of Field Workers, focus on the farmworkers, and we are always trying to help and see what their needs are. And we have different programs, like the Laundry Love, we have also scholarships for, yeah, for the Friends of Field Workers' children and for students that are going to college. And also, we do have the Diapers Love for all the farmworkers' families. And we continue working and focused on our mission to see what their needs are.
Es solo que decir en español que agradecimos mucho para las campesinos que continuar trabajando aquí en el condado de Ventura y viven en Fillmore y alrededor del valle de Santa Clara. Muchas gracias, muchas gracias por su trabajo y estamos siempre apoyando, ojalá, a ustedes y sus familias. Gracias.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So that was our first presentation. Our second presentation. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I would just like to point out that, so just a little background for me. My father was a bracero. He signed a contract down in Mexico City in 1941 to come up and work in the fields of actually Montana harvesting sugar beets. And then from there, he took a second contract and worked actually picking cotton in Baker's Field. This was all during World War II, and then subsequently went to Pomona where he was picking oranges. So, you know, Cesar Chavez Day means a lot to me because it directly affected my family in terms of the things that Cesar Chavez fought for directly affected my family and myself, so it's very meaningful.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for sharing that.
You know, I'll just add too, I think our community of Fillmore, not only our Santa Clara Valley and Ventura County, and really our state of California everywhere, all of our communities either come from farmworkers, been impacted by farmworkers, or the work of farmworkers has supported and made our communities thrive. And, you know, my story is my grandparents on both sides of the family came to Santa Paula and to Fillmore in the early 1930s. And my grandfather, just, just, interesting little story. In order to bring my grandmother over from Mexico, he got a letter from Santa Paula Citrus saying that Pablo Reyes has, you know, a stable job and is able to, that helped to bring my grandmother over. And so I think just, I think all of us who have farmworkers in our family either as, either as parents, aunts, uncles, or as grandparents, or as great-grandparents, you know, depending on the generation, have these stories about how farmworkers, farmwork has helped to sustain our families and helped to make us thrive. So thank you for sharing that. I appreciate it. If you have anything else to add.
I also would like to mention, if it wasn't for the opportunities in agriculture here in Fillmore, I would not be here today. From both sides of my family, who came from two different parts in Mexico, they both came here for the agriculture opportunities, so I'm really grateful that we have this proclamation today. And I'm also grateful for the current opportunities that are available in Fillmore. We have a lot of avocado picking, a lot of agriculture that's going on today, so it's an ongoing thing, and I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for the organizations here in town who continue to support it as well as our organization here in North Fillmore, who houses a lot of immigrants who are here to cultivate and pick the fruit and all the work that needs to be done here in California. So I'm really grateful for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next presentation, which is the Housing Trust Fund of Ventura County. And I'll call up Linda.
Okay, they asked me to be techie. Let me see if I can figure this out. Okay. Thank you. I've already forgotten. I think you said PowerPoint, right? Let's get to the first one. There we go. Thank you. My name is Linda Braun Trager. I'm the CEO for the Housing Trust Fund Ventura County as well as the Housing Land Trust Ventura County. Thank you, Mayor, city council members, city manager, city attorney, for the opportunity to give you an update tonight about the Housing Trust Fund. It's been a few years since I've been out here to visit, and I think it's really important that you learn about all the exciting things that we're doing. For a reminder, we were created in 2008, excuse me, as a nonprofit lender. We got our nonprofit status, federal status, in 2011, and we began lending in 2013. We were founded to do short-term loans to help developers building affordable housing here in Ventura County to get those projects moving, to get that early money before they secure their permanent financing. We started with a $2 million match from the state of California. You can imagine how fun that was in 2007 and 2008, trying to raise $2 million in this county for a program that was brand new, has no track record, great concepts, great board of directors. But thankful to many of the cities here in Ventura County early on and the county, we were able to raise that $2 million and start lending in 2013. In 2020, we saw a need for a way to preserve infill land and surplus land to make sure that affordable housing could be built on that land in the future. And so we created the Land Trust Ventura County, which is a housing land trust. Cities have donated land to us to be affordable housing in perpetuity, or at least 99 years. City of Oxnard, if you know Second and B Street, in 2022, gave us a piece of property which now is completing 110-bed Homeless Solutions Center with 56 transitional apartments. City of Thousand Oaks, in 2023, approved a piece of property at the corner, I'm so sorry, I have that little tickle, at the corner of Herb and Hillcrest, and we will be doing 78 for sale, deed-restricted, affordable townhomes. Woo! For workforce housing folks that'll want to purchase. Let's see here. As I said, we're a short-term lender, on average, two to five years. We do pre-development loans for developers, whether they be for-profit or nonprofit. We do acquisition of land for those developers, and then construction as well as pre-development construction. And recently, because of the increase of cost of construction and interest rates going up, we're doing more bridge lending, which is helping those developers who are, don't have their permanent financing yet, but there's a gap now because of these extra costs. So we're doing that as well. Let's see here. Since our inception, as of the end of '24, we had raised 41, almost 42 million. Today, it's now 45 million, since 2013. And that comes from cities, the county, the state, federal government, private companies, foundations, and individuals investing in the Housing Trust Fund. Last year alone, we funded 14 million in loans, and again, these are short-term loans. And in the first six months of this year, we're expected to do about 17 million. As of last week, we just funded 7.2 million. So the volume is there. It's huge. Now I just need to find all the lending capital to keep this machine moving. Of the loans that I, or the dollars that we've raised and funded, we've produced 1,780 affordable units as of last week. That went up to 1,898 units. Historically, we have focused our lending on developments that are focused on farmworkers, veterans, youth transitioning from foster care, homeless, and extremely low income. Exciting, last year, well, actually in '23, we received a $5 million, if you're familiar with REAP, or REAP 2 grants, those were COVID money that went from the, the federal government to the states and the states down to the associations of government. We got one of the largest awards at 5 million. It was clawed back early part of last year, but we fought really hard and we got it back at the end of last year. And so that will be used for what we call a 15, 16-year receipts residual loan to help our developers get tax credits. As well as a half a million of that will be going to the land trust to build capacity and staffing. We have also the old Prop 1, the 2018 Prop 1, which is a $25 million matching grant from the state of California. Last year was the last year to apply. We've currently received 14 million, and we are very hopeful of receiving another 5 million in announcement here coming, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. For those who aren't familiar with community impact notes, we do borrow money from our bank partners, from private companies, from individuals and foundations at a below-market interest rate to use for lending capital. I'm very pleased to say that the city's initial $50,000 investment that they did, excuse me, back in, oh, I didn't put it in my notes here, but I think it was 2016 or '17, I think. We leveraged that to fund into two loans here in Fillmore. One is Fillmore Terrace, which is still in the works with People's Self-Help Housing, and then Mountain View, which is just right down the street that's up and running, and families are thoroughly loving that beautiful property. That produced 122 units. And we have a couple of projects in the pipeline with developers who are looking to continue to build here in the city of Fillmore. Oh, 2018 is when the city invested 50,000 into the Housing Trust Fund, and we're now asking for an additional 50,000 for the '25, '26 year and potentially another one for the '26, '27 year. One of the reasons we've gone to every city this year, as well as the county, is as you can imagine, things at the federal level are getting a little dicey and not sure that we're gonna be able to receive those funds, and we're on the last year of the state match. So we have some other things in our works to raise lending capital, but we felt it was important to go back to all the cities. But I thank you for your time. I hope that the opportunity to see some of our properties in the future, we'd be happy to show you. And as well as I thank you in advance for considering this request for an investment into the trust fund. I think you'll find that it's been very valuably used here in this city. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you so much, Linda.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes.
So is the amount that the city gives, is that proportional to the population? How is that number determined? Or is it 50,000? Everybody pays 50,000. How does that work?
So the smaller cities, we've asked for 50,000, and the bigger or more active cities that are doing more in affordable housing, 100,000 for a multi-year payment, yeah. Some cities have done already significantly more than that, but in this round, that's what we're asking for.
And Linda, our investment, you said happened back in 2018. That has been our only investment thus far into the Housing Trust?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, and I guess, is there a distinction between the Housing Trust and the Land Trust in terms of the investment you're looking for? Does some go to the housing, some go to land, or it all together?
Good question. Good question. The Housing Land Trust is a supporting nonprofit of the Housing Trust Fund. The reason we did it that way is initially, under the old Prop 1, we could match land donation. So that program is now ending. Last year was the last year we can apply. So the funding we're asking for from the city is for lending capital for the Housing Trust Fund only. Now, we might get a project on the Land Trust side that will apply for a loan from us, but the funding goes to the Housing Trust Fund, to our development partners. Yes.
Yeah, so, so question on the 50,000. So you're calling it an investment. An investment can be defined a lot of different ways by different people. So in my thought of an investment, I'm thinking you put in 50,000 and you get 50,000 back at the end? Or is this more of a grant?
It's a grant. It's a grant.
I wanna be perfectly clear, because I don't want people to think, oh, the city's investing money and they're gonna get, you know, $52,000 back in three years or something. It's actually a grant.
It is a grant, and the only reason we use the term investment is because we're leveraging that money. So your 50,000, you know, the example that we've done, over 2 million into this city. We took your initial 50, and we've leveraged it by many other investors, some who do get their funds back and some who don't. The cities don't. So it is a term that we use, but I can see where it can be confusing. But in this case, it is a grant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, we're on now to agenda item number six, and that's public comments. And I actually don't have any public comment cards in front of me. We have no public comments today. Okay, all right. It's the first. Okay, agenda item number seven now is our city council reports, recommendations, and comments. Okay, I'll hand it over to my council members. Okay, Albert doesn't have anything? Yes, okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so I'm usually the one that talks too much on this, but I figure I've gotta report back what's going on, or what I'm hearing from the city. So first, I'd like to start with, I got a question from a constituent about a guardrail that had been damaged in an accident on A Street. Actually, Dave Wright, he lives in my district, asked about this. He said, hey, it's, what's going on with it? It looks like it hasn't been fixed in a while. And then I immediately asked what was going on to the city, and the city was kind enough to come back and say, hey, we're already on it. We've got bids out. There's already, we've, looks like we're gonna be letting a contract. So that was actually in process. Also, I'll be attending the Cal City's dinner in Goleta. So this is a meeting where elected officials from throughout Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties will get together to discuss what's going on with the state and legislative action. This is gonna be on Friday, the 14th. What else? Oh, also, there was a, I wanted to make a comment about the Mills Act. So if you recall, when I first got on the council, I'd asked about the Mills Act. So Mills Act is basically a proclamation that most cities in the county have already made, and it's specifically to allow for, I believe it's a tax benefit to homeowners that have a historically significant property. So in other words, older homes probably like built in the 30s. So in other words, older homes probably like built in the 1930s or earlier, they can ask for some relief from their, on the tax bill. And in exchange for that, the homeowner agrees to make certain improvements to that historic home that conform to historic requirements. Fortunately, Erica was kind enough to get back to me and remind me about this. And so in order for us to consider it, I would need to get other, support from other members of the council to put it on the agenda. So I'd like to see if we can, if we can do that. I think it would be a benefit to our constituents that do have historic homes in Fillmore. And let's see, what else? Oh, I just had a quick comment. The council packet was quite voluminous. It was 395 pages. I will honestly say I did not read all 395 pages, but it was interesting reading the parts that I did read. And what else? And I think that's it. That's it for my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Garnica. Just to clarify for, for what you're asking for, just very specifically, you're looking for council support for?
So what I'm looking for support is at least two other council members to say they would like to put the Mills Act on the agenda, on a future agenda, so that we can discuss the merits of it, the pros and cons. Obviously, we can't discuss it at this meeting because it's not agendized, but I'd like to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so a discussion of the merits of the Mills Act?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll be supportive of that.
Yeah, I as well, sorry.
All right, you have your support. Okay, thank you. Any other council member comments?
I do have a comment. I just want to, I just want to say thanks to the staff. I did have a few questions when reading the cover sheet or the glossary of the agenda. And as I had a question, I would go into the agenda items and my questions would be answered upon further reading. So I'm really grateful for, for staff for putting, covering, covering all the, all the bases on this, on these topics, because we have some interesting topics coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the staff does a great job on our staff reports, we have to say. Thank you for the summarizing lots of complex material in a couple of pages. We appreciate that on staff report. Okay, so I do have a couple of comments. The first is actually, I'll just bring up what was spoken about by Ms. Bron Swizer, I'm pronouncing it right, Ms. Lynda, regarding the Housing Trust Fund. I would like to bring that back up for a discussion, not, I don't want to mention a particular monetary amount, but just to bring it back up on the agenda. Anyone be supportive of that?
I'm supportive of that.
Okay. I have one person.
Yeah, I'll be supportive of that as well.
Okay, thank you. So we'll put Housing Trust Fund discussion on the agenda. And my other topic is the Clean Power Alliance. And I just want to turn to Tiffany to not make sure I don't give too much information here, but I do want to let our new council members know. So Tiffany, just let me know if I'm talking too much detail. So the Clean Power Alliance is a community choice aggregator. Basically, it's an alternative to investor-owned utilities. It's an alternative to like SoCal Edison or up north, Pacific Gas and Electric. And this aggregation, what it is, is it's a clustering of local governments who are geographically close to get to each other, cities and counties, and they form a program and they aggregate electricity demand within their jurisdictions in order to procure electricity for their customers. It's a little bit, a lot of information, but just to give you a little of what the Clean Power Alliance is. So there's like 20 or 21 of them in California. Our local one here is called Clean Power Alliance. It's our local community choice aggregator.
Mayor, sorry, we can't go into this level of detail.
Oh, okay.
Just, I think if you could give the ask.
Okay, all right, I wasn't, I just wanted to explain what it was, because figured if I want to put on the agenda. Okay, going to the ask?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me know, too. Okay. Okay, the ask is, I'd like to see if I get support for agendizing this topic of Clean Power Alliance, particularly an educational presentation, and also a consideration of funding a feasibility study done by the Clean Power Alliance to determine, to determine whether or not Fillmore might potentially join.
I'm supportive of that.
Okay. I have any other support?
I'll be supportive of that.
Oh, okay, so Councilman, Mayor Potem Mendez and Councilmember Garnica, thank you both. Okay, those two things are on the agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany. Okay. And then I had one other comment, and it was just actually good information that we received today from, from Erica. And I wanted to thank Roxanne for all the work that you've done. We know that in Fillmore, we have a lot of backed-up traffic on 126, particularly at the rush hours, in the afternoons, and on the weekends, especially in the summertime as people are going back and forth for the beach. Roxanne, our engineering department, has been working with Caltrans, and they have implemented a synchronization, I want to say, or at least a timed coordination of five, was it five or four signals? So basically, where 126 meets C Street, B Street, A Street, Central Avenue, and Mountain View, so that's five. It's rainy this week, possibly next week, so you know, rain always means a little bit more traffic and things are slower, but hopefully in the next few weeks, Caltrans is going to monitor it, and hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll be seeing a change in our traffic flow during this rush hour time. So thank you to the city. Thank you, Roxanne, in particular, for your work on that. Yes, I know. Everyone should be cheering those who are, who are here watching. Okay. We'll go on now to Consent Calendar. Can I ask for a motion?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a first.
I'll second.
And a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We move on to Item 9A, New Business. Our Creekside tract 6053, city well number eight, protection agreement. Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem, I am your city engineer, Roxanne Hughes. I know you all know that, but we are on camera after all. So tonight, I'm here to talk to you about this well site protection agreement. I did do a little bit of a PowerPoint here just to orient everybody what we're talking about. So in your staff report, you do have the site exhibit. I'm looking at it again, I was like, I could add some more labels and fix Good Enough Road. It's not Levy Drive. So to get you oriented, on the left here, Highway 126 is at the bottom. If you go all the way up, C Street turns into Good Enough Road, goes through the neighborhood, and then straight up to the end of B Street, that's where Williams Homes tract is. Our well site is way at the north corner of the Williams Homes development where that yellow, yellow box just popped in. And then over on the right side here, this is a sheet out of the grading plan at Sheet 6. Here's the top of B Street, you see in that red box. Now we're zoomed in to that top corner, and Sheet 6 of the grading plan is right here that I'm going to go to next, and our well site is pointed to right there on this sheet. So here's the grading plan, Sheet 6, and that orients us into the discussion here. So our well site is, you know, in close proximity to a major remedial grading, mass grading site right now, that will then move into precise grading and development of all the homes that we approved with the development of tract 6053. When we were going through the remedial grading review and soils review, they did fault trenching, they did significant geotechnical, geological work, and we brought up during the plan check period, hey, our well is like right there. It's a deep well. Will any of this impact our well? And we had the geotechnical and the geology, and then we did a third-party review with our city representatives of geotechnical and geology review everything. And the geotechnical geologists, geologists of the world all agreed that the little orange piece of the pie on the picture here is like a 40-foot perimeter from the well, that within that 40 feet, there's specialized grading, limited use of equipment. They basically can cut it and grade it to where they need to come down to the houses, but they can't like drive heavy equipment or do any, you know, big activity within that 40-foot perimeter of the well itself. As you know, we had the, you know, water emergency where well seven went down, and this is well eight, and then we were like, oh, we're kind of depending on well eight to like keep doing its job right at the same time that they commenced grading. And so we talked to them and said, hey, we're not sleeping at night over here. We want to just be extra, extra sure that anything that you do out there isn't going to impact our well's operation. And so first it was a conversation, then we talked about putting it in writing for an MOU. Williams staff and team was wonderful. They totally worked with us. We worked through the points of this agreement, and in the meantime, they staked the 100-foot perimeter around the well, which is the yellow. We went from the 40-foot, the geotech said, you're fine as long as you don't go in here, to like 100-foot buffer zone, just to be like extra, extra sure. And, and they're, they're starting grading way down at the south end of the site, and you know, we'll eventually get up to this corner of the site. Well seven is back in production, as you know, and we're ending that emergency tonight, which is wonderful news. And they have been grading outside this 100-foot perimeter. And then this agreement that's before you tonight basically says that they're going to survey the, you know, exactly, precisely locate the wellhead facility and then survey it weekly whenever they're within this 100-foot buffer of the well to make sure it doesn't move, because if it moves, then something's wrong. Shouldn't move. And we're pulling the well now that well seven's back on and just getting a pre-construction video of the downwell. And then when they're all set and done, we can video it again and make sure nothing unexpected happened to our well, and they'll be reimbursing us for videoing the well before and after, and they'll be performing and submitting all of the survey monitoring. They've already submitted the initial survey monitoring. Public Works Director Belomo is coordinating the pulling of the wellhead so we can video the downwell. Everything's been very teamwork. They've already agreed to sign this, they've already signed and returned this agreement so that we're ready to process it. And it's a, it's a, like I say, we don't really think that building the homes is necessarily going to cause a negative impact, and we did all the due diligence with the actual geotechnical people. This is just that extra layer of, oh, what if? You know, and then the MOU also says if there is any damage that they need to repair it at their own cost, no cost to the city. So I do want to thank Public Works Director Joe Belomo for all of his help in coordinating with this, and the planning team was involved, and all of the city staff coordinated really well with the Williams team to get here tonight. So that's my staff report, available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Roxanne. Does anyone have any questions?
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 I just want to thank city staff and Williams Home for working together, and this is such a vital part of our infrastructure. We need to protect it. So thank you guys for going that extra mile and doing this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's really important and to put the MOU, and like you said, for Williams to, Williams to come to the table and be, you know, good partners, and this is really great, too. So kudos to them for, for doing that.
I agree.
Okay, all right. If there are no questions then, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the mayor to execute the well protection agreement between the city and the developer of Creekside tract 6053, Williams Homes Creekside 131 LLC.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, Item 9B, Consideration of Acceptance of Public Improvements for, let me see here, I'm sure for DP, number 01-02, MOD 4, Nova Storage Edition at 455 A Street. Thank you, Roxanne.
Hello, long time no see. I'm back. So this one is, I'm sure you guys know where Nova Storage, right up there at the top of A Street at the intersection with First Street. And this is actually the second phase of construction on back in 2018, 2019. They did their first phase and they built most of the new sidewalk along First Street in front of their storage facility and planted trees and put in streetlights. And then this is for MOD 4, which is actually, at that time, they put in some asphalt sidewalk as a temporary sidewalk, the rest of the way to connect to the bike path that goes down by the school. And then they came back and they expanded the facility again, and they put in a little driveway entrance and a parking lot and removed all the asphalt sidewalk and put in full concrete sidewalk to the end. It did remove one of the palm trees, but we have six palm trees and two lights that are related to this that'll, that are being annexed into our lighting, and the property will be annexed into the lighting landscape of district. Well, Dan Financial is working on that. You'll see that come back to you for intent meeting and public hearing, and the developer just will need to vote yes to be formally added to assessment rules for that. So this just accepts into our public system, the new curb gutter sidewalk that was built as a part of this second phase of development just a little bit. They'll be submitting their warranty bond. We'll make sure, I've already got as-built in review right now, and once the as-built are signed and the trust council reconciled and the warranty bond is posted, then you guys would be authoring me to exonerate their public improvement bonds that did the security until it's built. And it's built, and it's been inspected, it's ready for acceptance. I do also want to play, thank Brian McCarthy and the Planning Department for his cooperation and work on helping me do the punch list and coordinate the landscaping with the trees and everything. And so takes the village, here we are. That's my report.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Does council have any questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that city council consider, consider the acceptance of certain public improvements installed for the Nova Storage Edition project under development permit number 01, 02, MOD 4, and authorize the city engineer to release the performance and payment bonds, and authorize the city engineer to accept a warranty bond, hold for one year, and release upon successful warranty inspection. Direct the finance director to adjust the balance sheet of street assets and begin depreciation in accordance with GASB 34 accounting guidelines.
All right, mouthful. Thank you. Okay, have a motion, a second?
Second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. This is great work. It's done. Okay, we have Item Number 9D, Appointment of Primary and Alternate Delegates to the California, oh, nope, did I move on? I'm sorry, I skipped one. Bad. 9C, Report to the City Council Regarding the Emergency Repairs for Well Number Seven, and a Request that the City Council Determine That the Emergency Has Ended Pursuant to California Public Contract Code Section 22050.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council. It is with great pleasure, I'm up here right now and reporting to you that everything is done with our emergency. So as matter of background, we had our Public Works Supervisor, Jay Kaufman, during his routine inspections of the, of the, of the water infrastructure, come across well seven making a knocking sound and, and it was hot to the touch. So that was our, our first clue on January 7th that we had a problem. The, the same day, he coordinated with our pumping contractor, General Pump Company, to come out, take a quick look at the knocking and, and, you know, give us their quick assessment, you know, on unofficial, you know, what, what do we do at this point? Do we let it ride? Do we pull it? Is there anything that you can, you know, do to, to assess the situation? The recommendation came that we do pull it, make an assessment of the downhole and the, the equipment. On March 15th, the well was removed and the evaluation phase of this project began.
January?
January, did I, what did I say? March, sorry. January 15th, yeah. So the, the delay there, when we observed, when we noticed the, the knocking, we didn't want to take well seven down immediately, because we knew what the pumping capacity at well eight was, and that was barely meet, that wasn't to meet and demand at that point. So we had to toggle on, we came up with a program where we had our standby crews working over the weekend toggling on well seven every two hours, taking it, letting it rest for two hours until our reservoirs got up to full. And then at that point, we would take seven offline and go forward with this project. So that happened on January 15th. We were at that comfortable point where we could pull well seven for the, for the full Here you'll see, this is our, this is a snapshot of our SCADA system. The red, and I'll go back to this and explain, you know, how we're going to the red, and, and I'll go back to this and explain, you know, how we're gonna to approach this situation going forward, uh, so we're not caught by surprise. Uh, this has been a learning lesson, uh, for all of us in the Public Works Department on how we can prevent these things from happening. Little key tools and, and stuff like that, that we can, you know, start looking at and making sure this is, you know, something that's, if it is preventable, that we do prevent it. So here you'll see, um, on the seventh, we were pumping at a, a capacity or a rate, a supply rate of fifteen hundred GPM gallons per minute. Uh, this is on the fifteenth, uh, the well pumping contractor pulling the house off of the wellhead. Next to it, the structure is where we keep our electrical equipment, um, you know, our, our chlorination, uh, equipment, all that sensitive stuff. Behind it's covered, you can't, you'll see in another picture, uh, is our headworks for um, the well. It's all the piping and stuff that gets into our distribution system at that point. Uh, when we pulled it, uh, this is what we found. Um, this is, um, you know, uh, deep pitting, this is an, an indication of, you know, not inferior material. It was, it was years since we actually touched this well. So this is understandable for the type of material it was. This is an indication that you're, you're, um, you're gonna have a torque problem at some point, uh, with this kind of deep pitting like this. So this is something that we want to try to prevent against, either with the use of different type of material or pulling it more frequently and maintaining it, doing whatever maintenance we can.
Joe, is that carbon steel?
Uh, this is carbon steel, correct. Yeah. This is the first, uh, the, the most deep, um, uh, part of the downpipe. Uh, this is our strainer. Uh, this is, uh, at the bottom of it is, you know, and I have another picture of this. Um, this is what pulls in the water. The turbine, uh, our bowls are right above this, um, another, um, section of, of intake, um, pipe. Um, as you'll see in the blown-up picture to the, right here, uh, you'll see a lot of, uh, um, bio solids clogging the intake. Uh, this is, you know, um, just like with the well shaft and the, the condition of the well shaft in the previous picture, these are adding to our decreased pumping capacity. And this is a picture of our turbine, uh, um, you know, assembly, the top part of it. This is not gonna mean much to you until a later slide, but you'll notice the very thin wall of brass surrounding, you know, at the, at the, uh, the outer perimeter of that inlet part with the diameter, um, structure. And here we're showing a picture of the degrading, um, uh, bowl skirt. Um, this, this is, you know, a, a, you know, a problem. This is adding to the inefficiency of the pump and it's causing the pump to work harder than it should. Here's that, that first, that deepest part of the well, the strainer part, this is what, you know, um, um, the, where water is sucked up into the pipe system and then pushed up through the wellhead. You'll see a lot of scale buildup. This is again, further clogging of our system. This is making the pump work harder than it should. And again, this is another screen or another picture, uh, that will mean something more when we get to a later, um, picture once, you know, of, of what we installed. But in this, this is showing, um, how much wear has occurred. This is, you know, for, uh, not to faint of heart, but um, this is our well system. This, this looks very, very disturbing, but I assure you, this is a very, very typical of a well. Uh, these, that what you're looking at is bio solids, uh, that accumulate. This is, um, algae, um, just typical things, nothing that's a serious harm, um, to our, our health, but uh, to the well's health, this is very detrimental. Uh, this, uh, adds to early wear. Uh, this is, you know, clogging that system again, adding to the reduced pumping capacity, the well working harder, the wellhead, the motor working harder than it really needs to. This is, uh, an indication, um, that we need to get in there more often and clean this stuff. And you'll see, you know, later on, um, how it helps when we, when we do our maintenance program as it's intended. So we're in this analytical stage where we're taking all this information, uh, that we've gathered, uh, through pulling the pump, coming up with a recommendation on how to, you know, move forward, working with our pumping contractor, you know, determining what is necessary. Um, a big part of the cost on these well rehabs is if you have a failed screen. We were very fortunate, we did not. Um, so that, uh, you know, that, that could have been at least another one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, um, i- if we had to, uh, re-line it, uh, and then associated costs with resizing the pipe and the wellhead. It, it, it just gets expensive if you have to, to re-line, uh, replace that screen that I showed you. So we came to city council on, um, the twenty-eighth, uh, January twenty-eighth and, um, uh, with the, with a request to declare an emergency for well seven, which would free us up and move quick on, uh, the necessary repairs. Uh, that's where you all adopted Resolution twenty-five, forty, forty-five. Um, and we, the next day, um, signed a contract with our, our pumping contractor. Um, and I, I'd like to thank the city attorney's office and her staff for all the quick help that we got on getting that contract in place. So much appreciated. This is one method, uh, this is the primary method that we use to clean our screens. Uh, what this is, is a, um, uh, um, a pressure, a, a, um, a device that we put down the downhole and it shoots out air at a very high rate, a very strong burst of air that pushes, it acts like a backwash filter, you know, backwash, backwash in a filtering system. So it pushes it out and then sucks it in, in a very fast, rapid action. Uh, this is what knocks down that biosolid. It can, um, it's, it's, it's really good at, um, the normal biosolids, but what we had was very, uh, thick and hard biosolids and this worked really well on that. This is what, after the cleaning, uh, you'll see much different than what the earlier screen had shown. This is biosolids that have grown on not the screen part, you know, where you see, you know, most of our screen. The, what's indicated right here is a patch. This is actually the start of our, um, downpipe, um, actually the start of our, 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 our screens. So this is solid, um, pipe, this is screen, this is where it starts. So it doesn't matter that that biosolid stayed there. It, it, it's not a screened area. And this is patch, um, so we, in the, in the past, I don't know when, um, at what point that this patch was put in, but, um, it was a patch that repaired a broken part of the screen or a damaged part of the screen. Um, I, you know, based upon the depth, I can't really apply it to anything, you know, one, we do see a lot of like the damaged screens where the bowls are located, uh, where the, where the suction happens. Um, there might be like a little jet or a hole that happens or that occurs within the bowl from, from sanding and, and, you know, causes a leak in that bowl. That will actually cause a water jet to damage the screen. That wasn't in this location, so, um, it had our pumping contractor and us mystified on why that patch was needed. We couldn't find any evidence of why it was needed. But it's not a problem. It stayed in place, uh, throughout the cleaning operation. If we did a different approach, you know, which is a brush and bail approach, where we have like brushes that, you know, scrub the screens, uh, that may have came off. So the, the, the method that our contractor selected for cleaning the screens was, was, was really good. This is new material day. So this is, you know, what makes us really happy. We're, we're getting in there now with, um, our, our new pipe, um, and, uh, cleaned pipe, uh, from our, from our, um, uh, material that we had taken out. These are our screen pipes, segments, and this is our bowls, uh, and turbines. And then these are just typical downpipes. So this is where I was telling you, um, you could see the difference, that the thickness in the brass section versus that. It's, it's, um, it's, you know, this is, this well needed to be taken down and rehabbed. It's very apparent in this picture, among the other pictures, but this is what was really telling to me that this was long overdue. And the, you know, you'll see the previous picture with all the, the biosolids of the scale buildup and after it's been dipped in acid and cleaned, uh, much, much, uh, different. And our, our screens, our, um, pipe with screens are, have been cleaned as well during that process. So this is the cleaned pipe that you'll see, um, that there's already one segment in with that strainer. That segment's, uh, in the downhole right now, that's the first pipe that goes in. And then we have screens and then we have our turbines, our bowls, uh, segment that attaches on top of the, the screen section, the screen pipe. Above the bowls is about seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of solid pipe. And, uh, the final, uh, piece of it before our wellhead gets installed, this was rebuilt, uh, taken apart, rebuilt. Um, there was a lot of issues with it. I don't have a full report of, uh, of the issues that were found, but I mean, it was rebuilt. It was, it was, uh, it's, it's functioning really well now. This is the post-picture. I, it's a, it's a shorter timeframe. We didn't, this was during the pump, our pumping, um, uh, test pumping phase. So we didn't want to leave it online for too long. We wanted to get, you know, we were pumping essentially to waste, but we'd bring it into the system to have it read, uh, the flow read. So we're now pumping at eighteen hundred GPM. Significant improvement. So, uh, the, the contract was written for, the agreement was written for four, uh, or two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand fifteen hundred, fifteen dollars. And the final cost, uh, from the contractor, uh, came to two-hundred-and-thirty-six, two-two-three, ninety-eight cents. One thing that we had to add, let me back up, um, oh, we don't show it in that picture. One thing we had to add to this final cost was about twenty-five-hundred dollars to our electrician. I passed, uh, around a piece of, of, um, yeah, this is another indication of why pulling these, uh, the wells offline for a little bit and having to evaluate is so important. Um, on there you'll see that there were cracks in the, uh, the, the coating. We are so fortunate that that didn't arc, um, and fry the pump or cause more damage, a fire. Uh, there's one of three of those size, um, gauge wires in there. So it's, it's a significant amount of energy that's passed through those. Um, that, that, so the contractor came, our electrical contractor on a separate contract, came and, um, um, cut away the bad section and spliced in some new wire for us to connect to our pump. So that was an additional twenty-five-hundred dollars, two-thousand-five-hundred. So it wasn't a big, a big expense. So, uh, this evening, um, we're requesting that the city council adopt Resolution twenty-five, forty, fifty, uh, that ends the emergency. Uh, the, we, um, have an approval for staff to file the notice of completion and after the thirty-day lien period to release that final payment to the contractor. And with that, I happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Do we have any questions? Questions? Any, any comments?
Well done.
Yeah, it's, it took a team, all of us in Public Works, you know, uh, we had shifts and we were there with the contractor. We don't like to leave our well sites unattended, even if it is, huh, you know, somebody that's under contract is just, you know, our baby. So we don't like to leave it unattended and we had rotating shifts. And we did a lot of weekend work, uh, making sure that the, the system, uh, was keeping up. Well eight kept up. Um, you know, we were very fortunate that, um, through some actions that we took that we were able to equal the demand with the supply that well eight was giving us at twelve-hundred GPM. On the seventh, we, we were at about fourteen-hundred GPM on demand, uh, but we tweaked our system. We took our, um, all of our potable water, um, uh, green space that the city owns and maintains, we took that all offline. We turned all of our, our water off at the, at those, uh, those green spaces. And then we were fortunate to have rain come and we saw a significant dump in the demand during that time. And I can only attribute it to smart irrigation controllers that the residents around town have. So I've, you know, brought that up and I've talked to Erica about that. We're gonna be pushing more advertising on that, uh, the smart system. We have, uh, the smart system for our own irrigation controllers proposed in the coming budget. Uh, it's a smart way to go. Um, and getting the residents to convert to smart irrigation controllers is only gonna help us.
So Joe, um, I know, uh, last time, when you came before us for the emergency declaration, I'd asked a question about, uh, what can we do to prevent something like this happening in the, in the future? And you'd mentioned, I believe at the time, that, uh, the well had not been touched really or maintained in like thirty years. And so this is the consequence of not maintaining it. So I guess my question would be, um, you know, in a short summary, could you tell us like how often would, would be recommended that we go into the well and do regular maintenance, like the screens or the back flushing or any of that stuff? I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm not looking for a whole nother report, just a quick summary.
Well, I, you know, I, I actually act that in the last city council meeting that we, this came up. I, I did promise a maintenance program and, um, it's gonna be important for us to develop that. And I'm working with the contractor to, to, you know, to come up with a plan that you guys can see, a plan that we could use to, uh, budget appropriately in our, um, our fiscal year budgets and our five-year, uh, projections. Uh, it is a very important thing. There's, there's, we are, I, I, you know, I did, I think I may have, um, uh, misled, uh, you all at that first meeting. We do maintain these wells, but there are some long-term frequency maintenance things that we do not do. Um, or we don't, we don't have tracked, I should say that. We don't have tracked. We wait for events like this in the, and we should not. Um, so one of the things I, you know, thank you for the reminder, I wanted to go back to this slide and, uh, you know, show you something that I, I've realized, uh, in looking back at the data, you know, trying to figure out, you know, was there something that we could have picked up on, yeah, earlier on and prevented this from being an emergency? Um, we still would have done the same stuff. We still would have paid the same prices. Uh, that wouldn't have changed. We would have been a couple of months ahead of this and we would have been in the winter, which would have been better. But, uh, this is, um, you know, this is the sa- the same kind of information that I saw, um, is, is back, as far as back as September. Actually, October is the, the furthest back I could get in SCADA. So, um, there, this was usable data. There's, I can get the raw numbers, which would be a little bit more difficult to analyze, but, um, through SCADA, I was able to see this. And we, you know, I see fluctuations, right? That's not normal. What that is, is all the wear, all of the, the metal rubbing on metal. That's not, that shouldn't be like that. That should be more of a flat line. And I could show you what well eight, you know, well eight was rehabbed in, in twenty-twenty-one. I could show you what that looked like today. And that's more of a straight line. So this, this, you know, I'm, you know, we're learning a lot from that wavy and, and, um, in that escalation, in that, that line. That's telling to us. Um, and another big point, obviously the reduced capacity. So we know what our wells produce, uh, you know, the, the demand or the, the capability of our well. Um, it's under about three-hundred, uh, GPM at this point. So it should not be this low. And that should have been our first sign. Uh, so we've educated our staff, our field staff, you know, when you see a, a, a reduction in, in supply, that, that, that's your first clue to come to us. So, um, but this, this escalation is a big indication to me. More importantly, um, when it, the cycle starts, when the, the well turns on, we're at a higher, uh, pumping capacity than where it ends its cycle. This is, this is a, a lot lower. I don't show the, the quantity here, but there's a reduction in about at least a hundred, hundred-and-fifty, maybe even two-hundred GPM. So over the start of the cycle to the end of the cycle, and we're talking about from like, say, I think, four AM to when it shuts off about, uh, To when it shuts off about uh eleven um, no, twelve PM. Where do I have that? That's this is eight, I mean, AM. So I got that wrong. Um, this looks like it's a uh PM cycle to AM shuts off at around eleven or twelve midnight. Something like that. I mean, afternoon. Yeah, so um, but yeah, let me, I'll be really quick about this, because I know you guys want to get on with the night. But um. There is eight. That's eight's line. It stays consistent and it's on forever and it stays consistent. So that that's, you know.
See the difference? Yeah.
Much ma- big difference. So.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Joe, again, and and for all of the team for their diligence and work on this and to really, thank you Tiffany as well for, again, turning around what we needed in terms of. Um, of fixing this this emergency that we had to do. This water is our precious precious uh resource that we have here in Fillmore. So and us being our water, our own water purveyor, you know, or, you know, dependent upon Joe and team to um to maintain it. So again, thank you for all of that. Okay, um, all right, with that, I will look for a motion on this item.
Um, I move that we um receive the report regarding the status of the emergency repairs for well number seven. Uh, that we ratify the contract award to General Pump Company, Inc. For amount not to exceed two hundred forty-four thousand zero fifteen dollars. For the installation of temporary um rental pump and real rehabilitation of well number seven. Uh, that we determine that the emergency has ended and adopt resolution twenty-five dash four oh five oh memorializing this determination. That we authorize staff to file the attached notice of completion and authorize the final payment to the contractor of owed retention and release on contract. Pending clearance of the thirty day lean period.
Okay, thank you. And I'm looking for a second.
I'm taking that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. It's great. It's great that we're able to to wrap this up. And that was fascinating to you to be able to see the inside of the well. Thank you, Joe, for all the the pictures and the graphics. It's really helps to explain to us as council members and also to the public. Okay, we'll move on to now agenda item number nine D. The appointment of primary and alternate delegates to the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mayor. That was definitely a gnarly presentation, even brought props and everything. That's cool. Good job, Joe. Um, yes, so today I am bringing to you, council, uh, the appointment of a primary and a delegate. Uh, to the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board of Directors, also known as the uh CJ CJPIA for short. And I'm looking for um, staff recommends to appoint an elected official to the CGPIA Board of Directors as a primary delegate. And an alternate delegate that is either an elected official or a staff member. City council members serve as an official representative to ci- to cities' various intergovernmental agencies, and this happens to be one of them. Uh, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board of Directors is made up of elected officials uh from each member agency. It is once again time for council to appoint a primary and delegate. Um, the du- the primary must be an elected official and in the past, the alternate was our assistant city manager. Um, as also our risk manager, but I believe uh you can choose one, two people from the council um this year. And so the board of directors meet annually and their next meeting is currently scheduled for Wednesday, July twenty-third. Uh, at the CG CJPIA's campus in La Palma, and this is happening at seven PM on that Wednesday. And there's no fiscal impact to this um as the CGPA covers all costs associated. And this is only a one-day thing, um, no night stay or anything like that. So, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so Erica, we know that you will not get out of this one. But um, do I have any council members who are like to attend this? Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so we have John as primary. Anyone willing to?
I'll be the I'll be the alternate.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Okay, great. We've got council member Garnika as primary and Mayor Proton Mendez as alternate. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, reminders will be sent.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, great. Um, we need a motion on that.
Yes, please.
Okay, great. I'll look for a motion on this item.
I move that we appoint an elected official to the or um council member Garnika and myself, uh, Mayor Protem Mendez. To be the primary and I'll be the de- uh.
Alternate.
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 Okay, all right, got a motion?
Um, second.
Second by council member Nika. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, great, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Now, item number nine E, the review and approval of the contract for the twenty twenty-five third of July. Community fireworks show to be provided by Pyro Spectaculars.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Now let's talk about fireworks. Uh, so this is for the annual uh third of July fireworks. Uh, so staff is presenting this um staff report today uh to approve the appropriation of twenty-nine thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-five third. July third community fireworks show, subject to approval of necessary permit from the Fillmore Unified School District. And authorize the ci- city manager to execute the agreement with Pyro Spectaculars. Um, after the the if you at the Fillmore Unified School District permit is approved. And so currently that is pending. Um, there was a shift this past October where it's no longer a facility use permit. It's an actual agreement uh with the the Fillmore Unified School District. And uh, we did already submit that and we're just waiting for it to get approved. Um, and so the city of Fillmore has traditionally post hosted a professional fireworks show to celebrate Independence Day on fourth of July. However, due to the um, you know, high demand on July fourth, unfortunately, we weren't able to find a producer that uh could do. Uh, the fireworks on that day. Uh, but we went ahead and went with our trusted firework company, uh, Pyro Spectaculars. And since we have already been with them for, or they've been with us for four years, we are at the top of their list. So if anything comes um opens up, then they will go ahead and let us know. And they do have a uh uh six thousand dollar premium on that day, just because it's very popular. Um, so if we were to get that fourth of July date, it would be a total of thirty-four thousand dollars.
Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five.
Okay.
Sorry, my math failed me. Yes, so um they also, Pyro also let us know that um they're also willing to train anybody who's interested um in doing the production of this. Uh, usually training is about two years, uh, because it's, you know, something you really want to get trained on. Uh, you can't just shoot off fireworks, but they're willing to expedite and work with the community members if they're interested. That way we can um, you know, get the community members to do the fireworks shows for us and we can get that fourth of July every single year. And other cities have done the same as well. So if anybody's interested, please let us know and we'll get.
I I see that there's our there's interest, John Meadows and Gary Cushing in the audience. Oh, no, not Gary. Okay, just John. Okay. Um, question, Orelli.
Yes.
The for the twenty-nine thousand, so basically it's if it be if the fourth becomes available, we're allowing ourselves through this grant, through this contract to go up to thirty-five thousand. For a fourth of July day of um fireworks show?
Yes, so we're allocating that additional six thousand uh in case we do, hopefully, fingers crossed, get that um that date. If not, then we'll just move forward with the twenty-nine thousand.
And it's also my understanding if we get a member, a local member of the public to be trained, then we can also, that will facilitate doing it on the fourth. It'll make it easier, more possible.
Probably this year, it's probably a little too tight because of the two-year training, but in the future, yes.
So you said. Uh, so you mentioned they're willing to expedite it. Does that mean quicker than two years or is two years expedited training?
So usually it's two years, but they'll expedite the training, so hopefully less than the two years. But I I would assume I if I were wanting to get trained, I would want two plus years.
Yeah, it's very, it's very dangerous. Um, I I just heard about this concept recently. But um, if if there is a way for the community to know about this dynamic, um, then maybe we can have some volunteers for this process. And 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 maybe there could be some sort of a background check on these volunteers to make sure that. That they're upstanding citizens who are going to be dealing with explosives.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a huge background, you know, check and I'm sure we could probably do community outreach on getting community members as well.
We would have to work with Pyro and then there's a, so the California Marshals um state has to veto these operators. And they have to go through all the the process for that. Just reminding also the public and the community that the reason why we ended up with the third of July um show. It's not because, you know, we waited on signing up a contract, but the year of the pandemic. Our previous operator actually got into some legal troubles and lost their license. And so we were put in the position right two months prior to fourth of July to scramble on trying to find an operator with a limited budget. And we were able to work with Pyro Spectacular and we have been working with them since the pandemic. And so every year we have been going back to them and saying, is it our turn now to have it on fourth of July? And so graciously, their board is aware of that and we're hoping that we can get that priority. However, it's a statewide situation where the operators are limited. And so that's why they came up with the idea this year on saying, if you have anyone that would be volunteering or would like to go through the process. Obviously, it would be, you know, the community member working directly with Pyro to make sure that they go through the training and they get certified. But then Pyro would delegate that person to Fillmore so that we could have a fourth of July event. Otherwise, we're still on the waiting list.
Okay, all right, great. It's clear. Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the appropriation of twenty-nine thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-five third of July third community fireworks show. Subject to the approval of the necessary permit from the Fillmore Unified School District. And authorize a city manager to execute the agreement with Pyro Spectaculars Incorporated. After the Fillmore Unified School District permit is received.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great. Well, we hope that we do have one or more volunteers. That would be great. Okay. Who knows, maybe have a whole team, maybe. That would that would be really, that would be really neat, actually. So and I have a feeling that we're um, being a firework town, we'll have volunteers. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is nine F, consideration of allowing, speaking of volunteers. Consideration of allowing volunteers to assist with facility improvements at the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Mayor. That's my item.
Okay.
And so our staff recommendation today is for council to consider the volunteer approval. Um, for participation, participating um in improvements for at the facility of the Boys and Girls Club. Um, the staff requirements would be that for safety purposes, and I'll delve into this a little bit more. We would require for us to always have a full-time staff member overseeing the volunteer work. Um, and then number three would be the compliance and guidelines. Uh, we have volunteers. They, we want to make sure that they adhere to established safety protocols. And we also want to make sure that we are following legislation and contracted requirements and prevailing wages. And so we are proposing tonight that there would be a limited amount of activities that those volunteers could potentially involve in. So as you know, just to provide you with a little bit of background, um, the facility that the Boys and Girls Club currently use is owned by the city of Fillmore. And it is leased to the Boys and Girls Club of the Santa Clara Valley. We have been going undergoing, I know the facility does need a lot of work, but I will get into detail of what we have been able to do so far in the past three years. Uh, being able to appropriate ARPA funds and then general funds. And these upgrades have, um, in my opinion, made a a huge difference of what we've been able to do. We understand there's more work to do, but so far we have accomplished a a pretty big amount of the punch lists of items that we had. Um, and how this came about, uh, council member Brogie initiated this discussion back in January and we're bringing this forward to you tonight. And so um, from twenty twenty-three until twenty twenty-four, um, actually, I should say until twenty twenty-five. We have uh able be, we have been able to do the roof replacement that had a cost of two hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents. That was uh used via ARPA funds, so it was a one-time funding that we received as like the COVID relief. We also have been uh received approval for the window replacement that is still ongoing. That was also through ARPA funds. It was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Recently, council approved the ceiling replacement inside of the facility. This was in February of twenty twenty-five, which totaled twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and eight cents. That has already been repaired. Staff will be preparing a um notice of completion in the upcoming agenda. And that was uh used through general funds. We also um, I conducted an inspection with their um management team at the beginning of the year. And one of the concerns that were brought up was the fact that some of the windows were not securely latching. And so one of the um things that we were discussing internally, and I want to thank the public work staff for acting up quickly, specifically facilities. Was to come up with a, you know, relatively clever way on how we can keep the facility safe and also the um kids who attend the facility. So we were able to install some ring sensors that um technically um they they um. They pair to their ring camera system. And so if there's a a kid, you know, trying to open um the window, and I can particularly use the bathrooms as an example, you know. If you have someone climbing into the toilet and trying to get out of the facility, then facility uh the staff would be informed by um having that sensor go off. And so that was installed and we appropriated two hundred and fifty-seven dollars out of general fund. And then thankfully, we had some of the tile in stock um from the facility and there was some tile replacement that was done um internally. And the cost was just the overhead of a hundred and seventy-five dollars, which took about five hours for the staff member to to replace the tiles. Um, so the proposed volunteer activities, because our volunteers are covered through our workers' compensation program. We need to be really um good about how we're monitoring um the staff. And so this is just a consolidated list. Your staff report includes a bit more detail, but I just wanted to summarize it. So it would be limited to painting and touch-ups, cleaning and landscape, minor repairs, fixture and flooring. Nothing that would require a license in the state of California to make sure that we're not, you know, um violating any prevailing wages or any. Um, we don't call the attention to any unions also, and so those are the type of activities that it would be limited to. Again, our main issue is to make sure that we um keep everyone safe and compliant. As I mentioned, the resolution twenty-three seventeen, which was attached to the staff report, does indicate that all our volunteers are covered by workers' compensation. Our work comp claim is really low right now and we want to make sure we keep that low as well. Uh, we would be providing PP or protective equipment to the volunteers. And we would also require a full-time city supervision at all times to make sure that they're abiding to the requirements. So we have a volunteer process in place. Uh, we would have that uh potential volunteer submit an application to the HR department. We would go through the interview and background check. The reason why we're doing a background check is because this is a facility that has children. And we need to make sure that we are vetoing any person that goes into the facility. We, our cost is forty-nine dollars to do background checks. This is DOJ and FBI. And then there's also mandatory training that we would have that staff person or the volunteer, the staff person delegate to the volunteer. And they would go through uh what we have already in onboarding volunteer process, similar to what we do with the Act of Adult Center. Which is pretty similar because we have a lot of mandates that we have to follow, similar to children. Um, one of the mandated would be the child abuse preventing training. So the fiscal impact, I divided it in two, what we have totally paid from twenty twenty- So the fiscal impact, I divided it in two. What we have totally paid from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. That's three hundred and sixty one thousand seven hundred and three dollars and eighty seven cents. That is the combined facility improvements that have happened in the facility. And then it, the costs associated with this would be the forty nine dollars of the screening and the time that it would. You know, cost for, uh, full-time staff member to process the application. And then, um, be there with the the volunteers. This does align with the community engagement goals that we will be, we will be discussing shortly. Um, it also makes, uh, the facility maintenance improvement. And then although this is not a specific direct goal, I think it does promote the volunteer and it builds community. Ownership to, you know, be able to engage our community in assisting. Um, so the next steps is for council to discuss this, to let us know whether you want to move forward or not and for us to implement it. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Erica. Alright, Ms. Counsel, have any questions? No questions?
I had questions, but I just, um, with my meeting with the city manager, she answered all my questions. Some of my questions just had to do with the liability and how would we overcome that. She, everything was answered too.
Got it, take care of. Okay, great. Alright, well, um. Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's great. I'm glad that Councilmember Brogie, um, that Carrie brought this forward. And, um, thank you, Erica, for sort of, you know, just going over in detail. All, you know, assurances that this is something that's possible to do. Great, okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I move that, um, we approve the, the, um. Participation of volunteers in specific facility improvement activities, uh, per the report of, uh, the city manager. Uh, for the Boys and Girls Club as outlined in the report. Uh, volunteers to be required to adhere to safety requirements, undergo necessary background checks and be supervised by a full-time city employee.
Okay, I have a motion. Have a second? Alright, motion in second. All those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great, thank you. Okay, uh, next item is nine G, the city council discussion of the goal-setting workshop and adoption of goals. And change of key results area to organizational values.
Thank you, Mayor. That's mine also. So typically, city council does a goal-setting workshop every two years and it happens concurrently when election cycles happen. Um, this year we, um, secured a contract with Tracy Millers of TM Consultants. The workshop was held on February twenty second. We had, um. A virtual broadcasting, so it was broadcasting on our platforms like we usually do with, um, council meetings. It was. Noticed because it's subject to a Brown Act. And we had the council chambers open throughout the day as well, so members of the public could also engage in the, um, workshop. And it's also recorded, so if you were not able to attend it, you can go back. It's on our YouTube channel and on our website as well. And so the workshop components, um, pretty much were in three pieces. It was, uh, number one was a closed session with the city manager's performance evaluation. Um, then we had a communication workshop and then the goal setting and so it it happened. For the entire day, we were here till almost four o'clock. So thank you so much, city council, for for making yourself available on that day. And city staff as well. So the five, uh, top priorities that came from it and these are our five goals. That council has given us direction to move forward with will be improve the downtown Central Avenue. Uh, beautification and economic development, enhance parks and recreation, facilities and programs. Improve public infrastructure such as streets, paving and citywide projects. Address the, um, homelessness. Uh, we would have a county-wide partnership and now we also have a grant that will help us. Achieve that goal and enhance public communication and engagement. So those are the five top priorities that council has given us as direction so that we can move forward. Um, this is a two-year cycle and so, um, those priorities are there through twenty twenty six. There is also backup goals or future goals, which is emergency preparedness, public safety for fire and police services. Security resources and water management, review of the general fund, uh, reserve policy. And for transparency, these goals are fluid. It's not that they're just set there and for two years we're just going to focus on that. As soon as a goal is met, I will be providing progress reports for council and the constituents. And then at that point, we could report happily that we've met a goal and then. Council can have a discussion and then a backup goal or a future goal can move up to the priority goals. Obviously, there has to be funding also allocated for those goals, but, um, we are. Pretty confident that we can, um, within the two years meet at least the five, the first five top ones. Um, as you can remember for those council members that were, have been here, you know, longer. We used to have something called, um, our key values and goals. And so as part of this process, I was looking at the previous goals that we had. And a lot of them were a combination of goals and values. And so I am proposing that we still continue with organizational values, which I think are important for the organization. Such as, you know, making sure that we're fiscal responsible, that we have public safety, that we are environmentally, um. Being good stewardships, community center growth, that we have inclusivity and engagement. Infrastructure and innovation and of course to me, having an organizational excellence is just a given. It's something that we should all be practicing and. You know, staff is always aware about doing that. Thank you, staff, for always excelling to trying to be the best for the community. So if a council report doesn't meet a goal, then we would, uh, fall back on the value that we're, we're meeting. Um, fiscal impact as mentioned, uh, we will work closely. We're in the budget process right now. Um, trying to budget forward on, on a lot of projects that we are working on. But the implementation of certain goals will be depending on available funding. Staff will also evaluate budget allocations. Seeing grants or, uh, partnerships when possible. And we will provide a specific cost to be outlined in future budget reports when we're coming, you know, mid-year or just doing. Um, a request for funding when things come up on the agenda. So the next steps would be, like I mentioned, I would be providing regular updates at public meetings. To provide you progress reports, uh, continues community engagement and feedback and. Um, at that time, you would let me know which goals we need to adjust once those are met. Um, so that concludes my presentation. I do want to thank again city council for, uh, being here that long Saturday for providing us with guidance. Thank Tracy Miller for putting together such a great workshop and staff also for being here and, um, answering questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Alright, thank you so much, Erica. Alright, the staff, staff. Do my fellow council members have, um, any comments?
I just want to thank Erica for putting this presentation together and my fellow council members, uh. For that day, I learned a lot about each, everybody, uh, individually and I think that helped me understand their way of thinking and, uh. Improve our, how we work together. So thank you.
Wonderful. Yeah, no, I just wanted to, to ditto that as well. I thought it was a really, it was a really good practice, I think, in ourselves of seeing. How as a council, we can build consensus and really kind of galvanize ourselves around what our priorities, um, are in our community. And, um, and so it was really great. It was a great, um, great exercise. And, you know, for community members who might be saying, saying, oh, you know, I didn't make it or I'll watch it, but I had some ideas. Well. These are the, you know, the initial goals, um, that we're setting. But please, of course, like I, like we always say, you know, all of us to all of our, our folks that we talk to. Let us know your ideas, your input on all of these different goals, um, because like I said, it's a, it's a, um, it's a fluid process. So, it's important. Okay, alright, great. Well, I see here. Is there a particular motion here? Or is it just sort of a receive and file? Okay, I think it's just a receive and file then. Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, well. We don't need a motion, I don't believe. Is that right, Tiffany? Okay, great. Okay, uh, our next item is item. Number nine H, consideration of the zoning ordinance amendment, um, number twenty four dash O two and ordinance number twenty five dash nine seven six. Allowing, one, but limiting non-storefront medicinal cannabis retailers to the business, business park zone and two. Medicinal cannabis delivery both as requested, both as required by state law and adopting exemption under CEQA.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council, city of Fillmore. Thank you for the long introduction. Allowed me some time to get the mouse set up here. I've got, uh.
I, I can keep talking, I'd live.
The medical marijuana facilities and mobile, uh, deliveries. This is the first reading, so you're not actually adopting this ordinance tonight. You'll do, actually adopt it officially on the second reading. Uh, it's ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment twenty four zero two, ordinance twenty five nine seven six. And we are amending the Fillmore Municipal Code to do two primary things, which is allow for non-storefront. Medical cannabis retailers in the business park zone and for medical cannabis delivery within the city limits. This is the business park zone. As you'll note, it's on the west side of town, south of Highway one twenty six. Quite an expe- expansive area, for the most part, underdeveloped. Uh, so allows a lot of expansive space, access to the highway, uh, and it's a business park. So why are we doing this? Uh, the state enacted Senate Bill eleven eighty six back in twenty twenty two. And it dictated that cities cannot restrict medicinal marijuana deliveries within the city. And if you do not adopt a zone where you can have the non-storefront facilities, they would be allowed kind of out large anywhere in the city. Uh, so we went ahead and adopted a zone. And the state regulation also allows for the city to adopt reasonable, reasonable restrictions. And those, summary of what those reasonable restrictions are characterized as are listed there. Under those bullets, so it's enclosed buildings, warehouses. Loading, distribution by delivery, onsite sales only. An operations plan can be required and it can be reviewed by the police department for safety and security. So we took those and adopted specific regulations in the ordinance to, to oversee these. And it's a lot of words here, I apologize for that, but these are the, these are the primary sections and what it really does is four things is. It allows for these, because our, our code currently does not allow for it, so it'll, it allows it as a, a specific component of our ordinance. It adds in definitions for medicinal cannabis and other, um, key terms that applicants could identify. It allows for the site, as I mentioned, the business park zone, and it will be allowed with a conditional use permit. And it establishes, uh, the operational standards for these types of facilities. And I can go over some of those in more detail if you like, but it, the operational standards are basically that you have to be licensed. It's licensed by the California Consumer Affairs and they would also get a city of Fillmore business license. Uh, it restricts use of alcohol. It has an onsite, uh, twenty-four hour contact person that's submitted to the city. Various other, uh, security personnel, odor control, uh, law enforcement can enter the facility. Let's see. Food products have to be stored per the health code. Uh, video surveillance and various other things in the operations plan. So that it's spelled out here, so anybody coming in can quickly see what's going to be required and put that in their application. So there's, there's really no surprises. We had a robust planning commission discussion on these over, uh, the months of October and again in February and they made some, some changes here. And some of those are related to the site distancing, so some separation between what would be incompatible uses. Or to not load up too much, uh, in one location. So that's kind of, that was a new sentence, uh, paragraph that was added subsection. And also they asked for video surveillance to be required as part of the operations plan, so that text was added as well. That pretty much covers it. Uh, under the California Environmental Quality Act, it's considered exempt. Because it does not result in a foreseeable physical change to the environment. Uh, the business park is covered under CEQA through a environmental impact report. And so construction of one of these facilities or the deliveries are basically already analyzed from an environmental standpoint. For the facility, it's expected to be there. Staff's recommendation tonight is to approve this first reading, introducing ordinance twenty five nine seven six. Amending those Fillmore Municipal Code sections. Uh, allow but limit the non-storefront medicinal cannabis retailers in the BP zone. And allow medicinal cannabis delivery both as required by Senate Bill eleven eighty six and a finding of exemption from CEQA. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Um, not so much question. I just, uh, want to thank, uh, Brian and Kevin and the planning commission for their hard work on this. And they did, uh, do lots of deliberations and, and, uh, they did make changes for it and thank you, those are good changes. This is not something that the city went out and looked for. We're mandated by SB eleven eighty six to do. So I think it's a wise choice and, and thank you for all your hard work.
Sure. And thankfully, the city attorney's office keeps us surprised of, uh, state bills that are working their way through so that we don't get caught behind on some of these. We're, we're actually early on this, so.
That's great, it's good to know. Any other questions?
Thank you, Brian. Um, thank you for the presentation. I, I did have a, a question slash comment. Um, here on page three on the, on the report, on the agenda, where it says, S, SB. One one eighty six allows for the city to adopt and enforce reasonable regulations related to. On number four, it says imposing or collecting applicable state or local taxes on retail sales. Of medical, uh, sorry, medicinal cannabis occurring within the city. Does the city have any kind of, um, flexibility or, or leeway on, on what those taxes might be? Because there are, there are going to be constituents who are most likely are not going to be happy about this. However, as we mentioned before, this, this is a state mandate that we're, um, ahead of the curve on. Um, but how do we maximize or can we maximize any kind of potential tax revenue from this, this? Development?
We, we, we could look at that. I know that some of the other cities in the county have tried to implement a tax and it, it wasn't very well, uh, organized. And, and it's hard to tell whether it actually reaped any sort of tax benefit to this. But I believe under actual, if it's a medical distribution or a medical card, we can't tax it. Is that right?
Well, yeah, there's two things. At first we did, um, the council, maybe ten years ago, put to the voters whether to adopt a tax or not. And it very narrowly failed, uh, but that's what's required to oppose the tax is voter approval of the constituents. Um, but Brian is right, medicinal uses are typically exempt from taxes.
Thank you.
And then it's clear, this is, this is solely both in the physical building that will house the cannabis. And the deliveries medicinal on both ends. Okay. Okay. Um, I, I had a question. Oh, um, regarding, thank you very much, also planning commission for the changes that were made. Um, the six hundred feet within a park, does that change then? Is there like a little carve-out of the, of the business? Uh, the business park zone for across from Two Rivers Park that where this facility couldn't be housed?
Yeah, if you, if you extended a six hundred foot line from the boundary of the park. It would get you up to about, I, I would say, within a hundred feet of the north boundary. So you could, you could locate one of these along the, along the highway in that section and then anywhere. As you go west, away from that corner. You'd measure six hundred feet from, from the, the westernmost boundary of that corner. So it would limit it. Yeah, because of the six hundred feet from the park.
That's good. That's great. And then another question, and, and I'm sorry if I, if this is included in the staff report and I didn't see it. But is there, um, signage on a, on a facility is, well. A, as long as they conform with whatever the city regulations are regarding signage, can there be any signage with any kind of words regarding? Cannabis, that sort of thing?
Um, the signage would just fall under our general sign standards?
General signs, okay. I was just sure if there was anything that we to do regarding limiting it. Not within what's being adopted here.
Yeah, there, there wasn't any thought to that, to, to limit what, what type of words could actually be included on a sign.
Businesses have a free speech, right, though? You would have to have a compelling state interest in, in not allowing signage. I don't know that that would.
Okay, thank you for that. It was just a question, this came to my mind, idea, okay.
We just regulate maybe the size and the size of the letters and the location, but we don't tell them what specifically, what words can. but we don't tell them what specifically, what words can be.
To piggyback off that question, may not be able to limit, what kind of, what kind of logo? Does, does it, are we able to limit the, any kind of phrasing? Because being as, that it's on the one twenty-six on the way into Fillmore, real, like literally the beginning of town, is it, is it the representation that we want for our city? For, to be, as soon as somebody enters Fillmore, that one of the first signs they may see regards marijuana?
Again, I think that may be a, a free speech issue.
Yeah, that would be a free speech issue, but is there a way to further revise the map where they could be so that they couldn't be along the one twenty-six?
Yeah, we could, we could increase the restrictions so that you're not fronting one twenty-six, or maybe that signs don't front one twenty-six, and they have to be located kind of on the interior. I mean, it's non-storefront, so it doesn't, it's not supposed to draw in, you know, everyday traffic coming by. So a sign like that wouldn't do them any good anyway. Because it's just, it's medical deliveries to a home, so nobody's coming out shopping for this kind of thing. I'd be surprised if they were advertising, you know, a marijuana leaf or something like that. So, but we can, we can look at some more standards like that if you'd like and bring it back.
Well, but I don't think we could treat this type of business different than other type of businesses. That's why I was thinking if you get them off one twenty-six, then they're, they're just not visible if that's your concern. But we couldn't say only for this type of business, you can't have signs on that side of your building.
Thank you, guys.
Something, yeah, something to maybe consider. Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, thank you, Brian. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item. And also, we have to read, it is a first reading of the ordinance, we have to read in full, page one twelve.
I'd like to move that the City Council, I'm sorry, I don't know where to begin here.
Approve and then read the title of the ordinance?
I move to approve the, the, the title. I'm sorry. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, California, amending Fillmore Municipal Code Sections six zero point zero four point one-two-three, comma, six dot zero four point one-six, comma, six point four, dot zero one zero, and seven dot four zero dot, zero four zero, sorry, I just want to laugh because it's just a lot of, to allow non-storefront medical, medicinal cannabis retailers in the business park zone and medicinal cannabis delivery within the city limits as required by state law. Repealing urgency ordinance twenty-four dash nine-six-one and twenty-four dash nine-seven-one and finding of CEQA exemptions.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. I know, that's a lot of numbers. Okay. Moving along in our agenda, we are now on item nine J, consideration of approval of a contract with Kimley Horn to implement the city's housing element programs and accompanying environmental review.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City of Fillmore. We, as you may recall, the housing element was conditionally certified by the state back in September. And there are programs within the housing element that must be implemented before it's deemed fully compliant. And two of those items require an effort to rezone the land and to amend the text of the zoning ordinance. And Kimley Horn was the contractor on preparing the housing element. And so, given the short notice from the state to do these rezones and zone text amendments, Kimley Horn was a natural to slide into preparing the mapping and the inventories and, and keeping it rolling through. So we did roll through that work, and they're mostly complete with their scope of work, but we were operating under the presumption that the previous contract could be extended. But due to a technicality within that contract, it, it's really expired. So we're kind of just coming back and doing the, the after the fact paperwork to reamend, to restate the contract and continue working from there. So that's kind of where we're at. And the amendment would add an additional thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars to the expenses under the general plan update contract. And that's, so city staff's recommendation is to approve the, approve the appropriation of the thirty-one thousand from the general fund and approve amended and restated contract services agreement with Kimley Horn to add specific new services related to housing element implementation as set forth in Exhibit A of the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
All right, thank you. Does the council have any questions? Okay, I just had a comment, and thank you, Brian, for, and Kevin, for your work on this. And that this is, is really important to have Kimley Horn as our consultant as we move forward with these two particular housing programs on Highway one twenty-six, right? The housing overlay and the creating of the residential medium high in order to, I guess, officially officially certify the housing element and move forward. So, thank you, thank you again for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that City Council approved the, an appropriation amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred from the general fund reserves to fund the cost of this project and approve amended and restated contract services agreement with Kimberly Horn to add specific new services related to housing element implementation as set forth in Exhibit A of the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Okay, have a motion, you have a second?
Second?
Okay, first and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, last item on our new business is item nine J, consideration of approval of the County of Ventura Senior Nutrition Program Service Contract Vendors for Use by the City of Fillmore Senior Nutrition Program. Good evening, Deborah.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Vea Senor. I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item nine J has staff recommending the following to be approved. Approve the utilization of five existing Ventura County Board of Supervisor approved vendors for the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program for the city's senior nutrition program. And authorize the city's city manager to make payments to these vendors using already budgeted funds for the city's nutrition program and enter into any agreement necessary to facilitate the continued use of these vendors through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, subject to city attorney approval. So the City of Fillmore provides services under the Senior Nutrition Program, or S and P, which is part of the federal government. The Older Americans Nutrition Program Title III C. The Ventura County area of, on the aging monitors and ministers, the funding for the program. Among the goals is to provide high-quality nutritional balanced meals to persons sixty years or older through congregate meals and home-delivered meals. The city's operations are located at the city's Active Adult Center, and it's run by city staff. In June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the County Ventura Public, sorry, sorry about that. County Ventura Board of Supervisors approved the S and P contract for services between the county and the City of Fillmore. In addition, they approved various vendor contracts to provide services that meet the requirements of S and P. These include Giordano's Food Service, Revolution Foods, Waters Edge, Waterside Restaurant, and Azul. Also, the, the Senior Nutrition Program has grant funding that does help cover a portion of the costs associated with the program. These contracts allow the city to order supplies and food at the contracted price and ends on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with the option to extend or to renew. The county has informed the city that they, and other Ventura cities as well, that they're no longer be providing the accounts payable services that they do. Therefore, Fillmore will perform accounts payable duties for the city's food services when the grant funding has been met and have been really responsible for the payments going forward. Well, the Fillmore's allocation has been spent. And therefore, on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, we had a mid-year budget adjustment required, requested for Fund three oh four, which was approved by the city council, of which approximately fifty thousand of that will go towards the additional costs associated with the food. Staff time relating to the accounts payable process will be absorbed at the current process, but we will revisit to ensure that it is not hindering other operations. City staff is also currently assessing whether the contracting process with vendors for the next fiscal year include exploring whether to continue to use these vendors or seek other vendors as well. The county does not restrict us to use these vendors. However, we would have to go out to a request for proposal, and then the Ventura County would then have to review it so that ensure that it does provide the senior nutrition requirements of the program. As of right now, using these, the contracts here, the advantage is that the county has already obtained favorable pricing with the terms of the vendors. And of course, them going with, as the county and other cities, it was a larger scale, so they had a, say, a stronger arm in the negotiating section. This meets the city council's goals for fiscal management, organizational excellence, and community engagement and communications. Now, the alternatives also are do not approve the use of these existing contracts and provide alternative directions to the staff. This ends my presentation, available for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So on the, on the pricing? Well, do we know if the vendor will honor the pricing that we're proposing?
Yes, in the contracts, I do believe we did add the contracts, I'm not quite, yes, we did, for the attachments. It'll do say, it does say there that they, we are allowed to order it and get the meals at the contracted price. And therefore, it's also with the county, what they did was the whole RFP, and therefore, it will continue until the RFP expires, I think in four years, as a total contract.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, my question has to do with, I didn't notice it, but I didn't read it really carefully. Did the contract have any adjustment for cost, like inflation or cost of living adjustments?
No, that not, if I correctly, not aware of. It was a strict.
All right, okay, well, I mean, I think that, you know, maintain our senior nutrition program here in Fillmore is really important, so we need, and, and as you mentioned, Deborah, that it's, you know, that we already have those vendors, they're approved, and we have, you know, the cost is locked in. I think it's, yeah, I think it's important. Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
So I move that the city council approve the utilization of the five existing Ventura County Board of Supervisor approved vendors with the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program for the city's senior nutrition program operations as listed, and authorize the city's, city manager to make payments to those vendors using already budgeted funds for the city's senior nutrition program and to enter any agreements necessary to facilitate the continued use of these vendors through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, subject to the city attorney's approval.
Okay, great, have a motion, do you have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of our business agenda items. Now, we have any outstanding committee, commissioner, or board reports from council members? All right, seen, done, we'll move on to our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. You provided the update on the one twenty-six signal, so I'll mark that off.
It's still thunder.
I wanted to thank all the coaches and referees and community members who volunteered for this past basketball youth recreation program. Thank also those who joined us a week ago. We had a post, postseason meeting just to, to hear what worked, what didn't work, and we'll make sure to be taking that under consideration for the next season. So thank you so much, we could have not done it without your help, so I just want to thank you for doing that. Also remind the public that if you want to continue to stay informed, we do have on our website something called Notify Me. There's a five-minute YouTube video on our YouTube page that walks you through, and you can sign up. You can decide on whether you want to be informed via text message or email, but every single time that we have a press release or a news flash published on the website, it sends you a text message or an email. It also provides you with the ability of signing up for job notifications. So if we publish a job, then you can just get the text message as well. Stay tuned, I will be starting in April, city manager's coffee in the morning. Date to be determined, I'm planning on putting out a little video out there for the community, too. I hope to have many of the residents come and, and meet me and myself meet them. And we're just open here to, to hear suggestions and, and be able to see what your priorities are also. So that will be happening next month, if everything goes as planned. And the last thing I wanted to inform the public as we, council had requested us to be providing regular updates on our homelessness situation. Thank you, Captain Malagon, for putting that together. At the next meeting, we will be having a homeless liaison unit providing an update, and so that will be happening on the twenty-fifth, and that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, at this point in time, we are going to move into our closed session. We have two items in our closed session. The first is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections five four nine five six point nine D two, because there is significant exposure to litigation in two cases. And also, conference with real property negotiator. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six dot point eight to enable the city council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiations regarding that certain real property at three sixty-four Santa Clara. The city's real property negotiators, the city manager, the city attorney will seek direction from the city council regarding the price and terms for this property. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are back from closed session. The council was updated on those two items previously mentioned and there is no reportable action. So that brings us now to our adjournment and I will officially adjourn the meeting at 9:07 until our next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 25th here at City Hall. Thank you.